I'd like to call to order the ME School Committee meeting for February 11th, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. The listing of that is on the agenda of those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items may be listed, may be discussed. Other items listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. I'd like to get a motion to approve the meetings from the January 14th, 2019 meeting.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's update.
You have, I believe in your packet, the REEDs annual report. Last month, we gave you the North River Collaborative annual report. We're members of both Collaboratives, REEDs, and North River, so it's just an update that, if you have any questions, you can let me know. Negotiations update. You know that we've entered negotiations with the teachers, WBA, and we've had a preliminary meeting with ground rules and stuff like that. We have a couple more meetings set up. One's supposed to be tomorrow afternoon. I don't know if we'll get it in. We're going to play it by ear and see what the weather's like tomorrow for the reps to come and the attorneys. So hopefully, we'll get that in, and then we have some in March set up. So we're moving with that. School choice update. You voted in January to keep school choice open for another year, and we have, we're open for applications until February 22nd. At that time, we'll look at the end-of-month, March SIMS data, and when we look at the March SIMS data, we'll decide how many openings we have at each grade level, what grade levels are closed, some of the grade levels, if they have too many kids, we might just let siblings in because there is a law that you get sibling preference. Also, if there are too many applications for too few seats, then we'll conduct a lottery, same that we do every year. Currently, as of today, we have 95 choice applications, and again, we still have two weeks left to get applications. We've gotten a lot of phone calls and stuff, and they're all across the board, from K all the way through 12. Again, we will be also sending out letters to kindergarten and first grade because what we found in the past is that we have to wait a little longer to decide if we're opening up kindergarten and first grade because we have to get through kindergarten registration first. And first grade, we need, there's always some kindergarten-aged students that don't come to public kindergarten. They might go at their parents' work, or they might go to a private kindergarten because of the hours that are more conducive to the parents' work and stuff. So we don't always know how many first graders we're getting based on our kindergarten numbers. So we are going to send out a letter to kindergarten parents and first-grade parents saying that we won't be making a decision until late May or early June for K and 1, but every other grade level, we'll look at the March 1 data and then decide if it's open. Then we'll get letters out to people and go from there. So right now, we usually, I think last year, we got about 130 or 40 applications, and that's before the deadline. We'll always get them after the deadline also. But, so we're looking, we'll get busy on that after the end of February, so people will know in grades 2 through 12, probably sometime in the middle to end of March, if they get in or not. Any questions on any of those three?
Thank you, Dr. Oakley. Business, fiscal year '20 budget draft.
Okay, so we put together, Mickey put together today, in a nice little budget notebook for you, the first draft of the FY '20 budget, which we're following the same process that we had last year. You're getting the budget tonight, and the reason for that is so that you can take it home for the next two weeks, read over it, read through it. Again, this is preliminary. This is the first draft, and if you look through it and have any questions or comments or ideas of any changes, then at our actual budget meeting, which is February 25th, so it's a Monday, we come back from February vacation, we will actually go line by line, like we do every year, through the budget and answer any questions and give you any detail that you need. I can tell you that right before the holidays, we got a message from the Selectmen through the Town Administrator's Office. They were asking for level service budgets, and so the one that I'm putting in front of you right now is a level service budget, and, but we still need to go through it, and there might be areas that you want to change and look at. I can tell you that a level service budget is a little over 5% increase, so, you know, there may be areas within the budget that you might need to cut, go up in certain areas. The overall, three, two areas that we're really looking at significant increases are in the English language learner area of the budget because we're getting so many more students that don't speak English, and there's a graphic in your binder that shows the increase over the last four years of English learners. And because of that, we need to increase our staff because these English learners have needs, depending on how well they speak English, on how many minutes a day they need of English language instruction. Right now, we have a 1.0 ESL teacher, but it's split between two people, so it's a .5.5, and that's just not enough to cover all the kids. Last year alone, I think we got, how many at Roselle over the summer?
Five new.
We got five new ELLs that didn't speak English over the summer, just at the McDonald's School. So it's really increasing. We live next to an urban center, so I have no reason to think that this is going to go down. It's just going to keep going up because if you look at surrounding communities, their population of English language learners are going way up. So we need to make sure that by statute, we service them to the best of our ability. So we did, I did add a .5 FT for that. The other area that I want to draw attention to you, that you can look at over the next couple of weeks, is the special education. And I talked about this last meeting, when I talked about the change, the proposed changes in the Chapter 70 formula that we're looking at trying to change through legislation, and one of the areas that we talked about is doing a better job funding at the state level special education costs, especially out-of-district special education costs, and transportation for those things. So a big increase in this budget is out-of-district and transportation for out-of-district placements because there are a lot of needs there, and although, if you look percentage-wise to our school compared to a lot of schools around, we don't have a high percentage of out-of-district, but the placements are expensive, and honestly, more expensive than that is the transportation because you get some reimbursement for the placements. We don't get a dime for the transportation, and that's really what is hurting local school districts. It's the transportation. And some of this transportation could be $30,000, $40,000, $50,000, $60,000, depending if the transportation needs a monitor on the van or the distance that it is. So that increase is actually 2.5% of our overall increase. So, well, I want to draw your attention to that, too. But those are the two main areas of increase in the budget, and again, this isn't a budget presentation tonight. This is just so that you'll have it because I think it's, when we go through it line by line on the 25th, I think you're better off already having gone through it yourself so you feel comfortable, and you already have questions that you can ask. If I just give it to you that same night of the budget presentation, then you wouldn't have time to prepare and have questions. So I want you to become familiar with it. And again, reminder that that meeting on that Monday starts at 6:00, not 6:30, and the only thing on the agenda is budget, correct? That's the only thing on the agenda, we're just going over budget. And then after that, the rest of the process is, we'll hopefully come to some form of agreement of what budget we want to present to the Selectmen and to the Finance Committee, and we'll vote on a final budget to present to them at our March meeting, and then on March 21st and 22nd, I think, we have the presentation to the Finance Committee in the evening and to the Selectmen. And then after that, they'll tell us what they propose or what they're putting forward to the town meeting in June. Any questions on that? Keep you up to date, too, because as of right now, the times haven't changed for those presentations for the FinCom or for the Selectmen, but sometimes, as we get closer and different people have to move their presentations, they might change, but I'll let you know.
Thank you.
So that's where we are.
Thank you very much. Mickey, thank you.
Yeah, and...
Thanks for the binder.
Yeah, and it's a working draft, so that's why, it's not the final way that we usually put it together, but you can write on it and do all that stuff. I think it's easier because you can move things around.
That's great.
Questions?
Middle, Senior, High School Program of Studies, Mr. Bodwell.
We were talking about 1920, uh, school year. We're actually starting the process tomorrow with our kids. We start with the juniors, meeting with them to go over the course selection process and go through 10, 9, and 8 graders as well this week, giving them the week of vacation to look at their schedules. They'll do it all online, and then they'll be due and be turned in by Monday, March 1st. So give them a good amount of time. The teachers at some now are doing some course recommendations for the kids, so that kind of puts it all on Aspen so they can see what they're selecting. So some of the changes we'd like to propose for this year, the first one is removing communications, the semester course as a graduation requirement. We still want to offer the course, and we still think there'll be quite a few kids signing up for it, but this is something we've discussed for the past few years, and when the English coordinator came and talked to me about it, I said, "Well, I need more information as to why, and what are we doing in other classes that would supplement this communications class?" And she came forward with, did a survey out to the staff, and found that they're doing a lot of very similar things in different courses. So we think it's a valuable course. We think the kids get a lot out of it, but we think we don't really need to keep it as a graduation requirement. We have all, we're doing the, you know, both online stuff and also stuff that are presenting in front of the class, for one recommendation. Honors breakfast, we just want to be consistent with what is in the student handbook. We've eliminated quarter four. We feel that to qualify for honors breakfast, it should be a this-year kind of thing, so they qualify for when, you know, the winter one by quarters one and two, and the spring for quarters two and three. So it just, there was too much, I think, you know, looking back, the kids, you know, if they weren't doing well into last year, they penalize them for the current year. We have just a change in some of the course titles. Added hip-hop to the history of jazz, rock, and roll in hip-hop to make it more current, hopefully attracting more kids to that class. They did some changes within that course description as well. And the same thing for the history of Broadway, added some new stuff to that course description. We'll have the coordinators there for the meetings with the kids, and they'll talk about some of these changes, and also the music teacher will go in and talk about what those courses are, again, trying to drive more kids into these good classes. And then we have some new courses that we're going to be hopefully adding. The first one is the junior-senior elective, Life 101. I've kind of put this out there during my coffee hours and school council meetings to get the feedback from parents as well, because I know our kids are very excited. I know our teachers are excited, but surprisingly, or maybe not too surprisingly, the parents are very excited about this course. Giving these students in their junior or senior these real-world experiences, and when they leave here, they're prepared to whether it's college, or workforce, or something outside. Goal setting.
That also was something that came up during, when we were doing the Planning for Success that came up in the curriculum group?
Yeah.
Something like that.
I think it's very worthwhile, you know, overcoming setbacks, applying for, keeping a job, basic home and self-care etiquette, family, financial management, growth mindset, mindfulness, time management, stuff. The things, I think the kids are going to love it. I think it's going to be very helpful for them, and it's going to kind of complete what we're all trying to do to help these kids out.
That's excellent. I love it.
And in the science department, we're hoping to add an honors or a science course, you know, something that would, you know, have them go a little bit deeper, more problem-solving, more inquiry, more extension. We don't have a lot of honors offerings in the junior year, so it's a good opportunity for them to add an honors-level course, and it's going to, I think, be very beneficial in today's world to add that component. The CAI, we've called the CAI for years, contemporary American issues, we're changing the name to contemporary global affairs. Sometimes colleges look at that on the kid's transcript and don't really know what it means. It's not just American affairs, it's things that go across the globe, so changing that name, I think, is important. And then looking to add an AP course, AP Computer Science, with all coding and things like that, I think would be very beneficial. Kids who complete, you know, Computer Science II have the opportunity to go into AP Computer Science. Those are our recommendations for additions. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the presented additions and changes to the program of studies as presented.
Moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2019, 2020, school calendar.
Yeah, I don't know if you have a copy of the draft, and this is a draft because, as Kim will tell you, you know, will tell you, going over it and looking at it and looking at it and looking at it, there could be little things that, having another set of eyes looking at this, we gave it to the principals this morning, just little things, if you do notice something, because we're presenting it tonight, but you won't vote on it until next month. One of the, there's not that many things to draw attention to, except you voted last year that we will start school before Labor Day every year. We used to have the thing, the policy that depending on what date Labor Day fell on, we went either before or after, but last year, you changed the policy that we would go before. So you can see that we will start, teachers will come on August 26th on Monday, students, grades 1 through 12, will come on the 27th, Tuesday, and we'll go Tuesday, Wednesday, after Thursday, have Friday off, and then that's Labor Day, so Monday off, so it goes to a long weekend. So I think one of the reasons that you did vote for this last year is you liked the idea of the soft start of three days, and the next week, four days, then five days, and kind of easing back into things. So that is the start of the school year set date, which then would put us out for the last day without snow days on Friday, June 12th, and that's, and it would be the 19th with five snow days, so that's indicated on there. The other thing to look at is the holiday vacation in December. So you can see that Christmas falls on a Wednesday, so once every cycle, you have a situation where do you bring the kids back on a Thursday, you know, after New Year's for the Thursday, Friday, or do you keep the building closed or, and give them two weeks, because it doesn't usually happen when it's on Thursday, Friday, Monday, or Tuesday? So I can tell you that the last time this happened, we said, "No, we're going to," no, we were starting after Labor Day, so we were a little later, and we said, "We'll have the kids come back that Thursday and Friday." And what ended up happening is a bunch of us actually got stuck somewhere. I was stuck in Florida and had to call us two snow days because we had a blizzard. So we should have just called it anyway, but...
I'm sure you were stuck in Florida.
I was! I was stuck!
Yeah?
Let's knock on Michael Island. Is that ringing a bell?
I think it was the keys, then. So anyway, I put this in as a proposal of the two weeks. It's really up to you guys, but again, it, you know, it's only once every, say, six years that you can, you know. Next year is a leap year, so February has an extra day, so it pushes us a little further in June, but it's still June 12th, Friday. So even if you have some snow days, you're still in the teens getting out. And the only other thing was, you always, you can't put graduation more than 12 school days before the actual last day, so I counted back. That puts us Memorial Day's early next year, puts us on having graduation May 29. We checked with Mr. Bodwell, and his daughter is graduating, but it says on the calendar it's, well, okay, he hopes she gr- no.
He just knocked on wood.
That upon acquit's graduation is June 5th.
Correct.
So remember the last time we moved it to Thursday night because his daughter was the night? So we can do it on the 29th, unless someone had mentioned this morning, like, "Well, we really liked it on a Thursday. We always want to do it on a Thursday," but it's, the only reason we did it that year was for mom, so. So I have it in there as the Friday, the 29th, so I don't, I mean, you can look at the dates of the school committee, but I don't think there's anything else that really changed that much. It's mostly just, just those things. So if you want to think about it, take a look at it, and if you have, if you do, though, we're going to vote on it in, at the March meeting, so if you do have changes, if you could just email them to Kim so that she can make the changes before that, so that you're voting on the changes, you know, especially, even if it's just you find something that's a wrong color or in the wrong, whatever, that, that is helpful, just to have more eyes look at it, because there's a, you can see, there's just an awful lot of detail that goes into this. Any questions?
No.
Awesome.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley. Inclusion Matters update, Mrs. Hume.
Yes. Inclusion Matters sponsored our first-ever adaptive yoga classes for kids this past month. We were able to underrate the cost for families to make the classes especially affordable. The classes were full, and parents want them to continue, so they're hoping to offer a new four-week series in March. Our next meeting is going to feature our district's OT, Jenna Duckworth. It's going to be at 6:00 PM right here in the Learning Commons on Tuesday, February 26th. Jenna will be presenting on the power of play to help all of our children at any age develop academically, socially, emotionally, and physically. Inclusion Matters is going to be partnering with the Eastern CPAC to co-host two evenings this spring. More details will follow on those. And they're also pleased to announce that they're sending two parents free of charge to the Visions of Community Conference hosted by the Federation for Children with Special Leaks this spring, and they're very grateful that the fundraising allows them to support families this way. And lastly, they just want to mention that the Chair of Inclusion Matters continues to meet with families by phone and in person to assist their, with their IEP planning, talk with them about their kiddo's specific disabilities, and direct them to local and statewide disability resources. So if anyone knows, or if you are a family here in West Bridgewater that needs support, please reach out to Inclusion Matters.
Thank you, Mrs. Hume.
Just to follow up on that, we should give a shout-out to Jenna Duckworth for entering Rose McDonald School, or our district, in the Imagination Playground giveaway, and there were five finalist schools. We were one of them, and the first three vote-getters on Facebook got the Imagination Playground, but there were three different sizes, so there was the extra-large size that truly turns into like a huge playground, and then the second one was medium-size and then the small-size, and West Bridgewater won the grand prize. We don't know really how big it is, or we're going to start, but we did win the grand prize, and so thank you for everyone that voted for us. And she's been in touch with them, and they said they'll ship it out, and so that's really cool because she really feels that with our inclusion program, it's a real great creative play, and it can be set up, either you can set it up as an indoor playground or gym, or you can set it up outside. So, and I think it, could be wrong, I'm pretty sure it was like $10,000.
Eight to $10,000.
Eight to $10,000 worth of material, so it was, it's a great, great win, so it was nice that she saw that and that all the people on Facebook voted for us, so.
Great.
They're excited.
Moving on, approval of policies. Policy 8200, Animals in the Classroom, Mrs. Hume.
Yes, that was mine, and you might recall that we opened up that policy, which is Animals in School, to include or add a section on therapy animals, which I forwarded to you, and there's also a copy that Kim provided for us. So I have met with Mr. Michael Asic a few times, and we did some research on what other school districts near us have regards to therapy dogs, and we kind of came up with our own flavor to it, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or I'd just like to ask for approval to add the therapy dog section to our Animals in School policy.
Moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Glad that one's funny. Bye, Ellen.
And we do currently have, well, we have one therapy dog that's here, you know, on campus a lot of the time, and then we are fortunate to have a second one through a town resident, but she also works in REEDs Collaborative, and so when she gets some free time, she brings her therapy dog. But I will say that Almond is getting a lot of, a lot of business in the West Bridgewater High Schools, and I would venture to guess that every kid in the school system knows who Almond is now, and spends a lot of time in kindergarten, but comes over to the high school and stuff. But also, really, I thought was really helpful, you know, when recently, we had the unfortunate death of a student and just had, you know, therapists and stuff like that, but it was really kind of neat to see how Almond, and we let them come over for the day, interact with the kids, and so it's amazing what, something simple as just a little puppy or little dog can really take away the anxiety of kids that might, you know, be anxious about coming to school, worrying about something happening, and they just like totally change. So it's really interesting. So we're actually, I think, really lucky to have what we have. So we just need to make sure that our policies were in line because this policy was put in so long ago and before, really, we, people started using therapy dogs.
Yep. So Dr. Oakley, where did the litter of puppies come from? What was that? That was unbelievable.
So the litter, the litter of puppies, so our director of maintenance, Julie Hamlin, she breeds puppies now, German Shepherd, right? And had a litter of 11, I believe, and they were maybe four weeks old. So when people go around and they just, you know, needed someone to hug, she's like, "I'll bring them in and put them in the pen on the stage," and again, there was like a line, so, you know, you didn't want to scare them, so they only let in 10 or 11 kids at a time, but there was a line outside of the auditorium for kids to get in, and again, another thing, cute little puppies, like an amazing thing, that just a hug made a difference, you know? And it was so cute, and so I really appreciate that Julie and Tom brought, brought the dogs, and then they actually did a whole teaching thing on it while they were there because they were the whole time helping out and kind of neat thing.
Really neat.
Yeah. And they're cute.
Warrants. Warrant subcommittee report. This is solid.
So following the puppy story, which, this isn't going to be as warm as, no. For the following warrants that were issued and paid under the
Bill warrant dated January 31st, 2019, in the amount of $213,425.9. A bill warrant dated February 7th, 2019, in the amount of $44,791.88. And then the last bill warrant dated February 14th, 2019, in the amount of $70,069.17. And then I also reviewed and signed two payroll warrants, one dated January 24th, 2019, in the amount of $478,214.84. And then the last one was dated February 7th, 2019, in the amount of $474,517.59. And again, as always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, they are available in the selectmen's office for review. So, thank you again, Mickey.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Public forum, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personal issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality can be, cannot be addressed at this, at this public forum. Note-takers? All right. District-wide, February 18th through the 22nd, winter break, no school. March 6th, the half-day pre-K through 12, grade K through 12, in-service day. District meetings, school council meeting. Howard School, February 11th at 2:45. Spring Street School, February 12th at 2:45. Roseell McDonald, February 25th at 3:30. Middle, Senior High School, March 5th at 2:30. PTO meeting, February 26th, 7:00 PM at the Howard School. Athletic boosters, February 13th at 7:00 PM. Inclusion Matters, CPAC, Friday, I'm sorry, February 26th, 6:00 to 7:30. Presentation on the power, the power play in the home and the school by Jenna Duckworth. Middle, Senior High School, February 28th, AP night, 6:00 PM. March 8th is Mr. WB at 7:00 PM, which is a great event, and it goes to the, so go to the scholarship fund.
It does.
Okay. At the Howard School, March 8th, progress reports go home. Roseell McDonald School, February 27th, life-touch, life-touch spring photos of 2019. February 28th, Red Cross America, starring, my glasses. Staring story, Big Joe at 6:30, recommended. Recommended donation of $5 per family for the PTO. The Spring Street School, March 1st, science on the go for the kindergarten. March 4th and 5th, life-touch pitchers. March 5, 6, and 7, preschool registration. The next regular scheduled school committee meeting will be Monday, February 25th at 6:00 PM. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.